Committee on Finance is hereby called to order for the record. May the Chair request this Secretariat to kindly acknowledge the presence of our invited guests this morning.
We would like to acknowledge the presence of the Deputy Governor Gudigundo of the Banco Central,
Sir?
Treasury Rosario de Leon of the Bureau of Treasury, Asexolidad Emilia de la Cruz, Corporate Affairs Department of Finance, Yusek Hill Beltran, Department of Finance, Chairman Cesar Villanueva of the Governance Commission for GOCC, Commissioner Angela Ignacio of the Governance Commission for GOCC, Director Flarey de Jimenez, Internal Audit Office, COA, Yusek Eduardo de Rosario of the Office of Civil Defense, Attorney Heronimo Quintos, Chief Legal Research Division, DOTC, Assistant Director Mercedes Navarro, Fiscal Planning Bureau, DBM, Director Magdalena Aruta, Internal Audit Service, DBM, Director Patrick Gatán, Blood Control, DPWH, Attorney Camilo Foronda, Legal Department, DPWH, Assistant Director Mariethes Oliva, National Policy Planning, NEDA.
Thank you for honoring our invitation this morning. I'll try to be as brief as possible so that you can go back to your respective duties in your respective offices. Maganda umaga, puusen yun lahat. For the record, let's take up Senate Bill Number 404, 661, 779, and 1834 authored by Senator Santiago Ejercito Estrada Engingona on the virus bills providing for and proposing for a budget impoundment control act. Chair hereby orders these bills be consolidated. May we know if the DBM has already submitted its comment on these bills? Ma'am? Director Navarro?
Sir, we are still finalizing our comments. We will submit it to the Senate.
Offhand, ma'am, you're well aware of this bill. Matagal nam may mga panukalang batas po tulad nito. Iisa lang naman siguro ang direksong tatahakin ng DBM, kaugnay nito. Ayaw niyo.
Sir, may reservations. There are reservations, particularly on the flexibility on the implementation of programs and projects because of the process that have to be installed.
Ma'am, if I may ask, again, without preempting the DBM's position paper on the matter, I understand fully that it will effectively tie the hands of the President insofar as implementing the budget is concerned, but understand too where Congress is coming from. Kung saan po kami nanggaling, labin limang taon ako sa kongreso eh. Propose ng propose ang mga ahensya ng budget. Kada taon naman, hindi naman 'yung napapatupad dun sa mga project na nililista ng mga ahensya, either because of their absorptive capacity or one way or the other. Talagang niloloko lang kami at nagiging savings sila at in the end, narerealign lang sa ibang item, sa ibang lump sum, sa ibang project na niwala sa listahan. How do we meet halfway insofar as that situation is concerned? I'll give you one point of example, although it's not happening anymore. Nung nagda ang mga kongreso sa ilalim alim bawal dating Pangulong Arroyo, palagi nagpo-propose ang DBM ang pamahalan ng pagha-hire ng labin limang libong teacher. Kada taon naman, ang nahire lang mga pitong libo, walong libo. At 'yung balanse, savings na binibigay parang bonus o pinapababa sa deficit ng pamahalan. 'Yung budget kasalukuyan ang Deped para sa 2014. Kaya niliwanag po namin sa kanila yun, pero hindi lang nasubmit 'yun data in time. 'Yung pinropose po nilang hiring ng teachers eh mula January hanggang December na sweldo pinropose nung kinumpute po namin. Equivalent to approximately... Ilan libong teacher yun? Yon ali ilan libong teacher yun? Approximately no more, about 20,000 teachers. Pero nung kinumpute namin 20,000 teachers times 12 months 'yung sweldo pinopropose nila, when in truth and in fact, they will be able to hire these teachers some in May, some in March, some in June, some for the second semester. So from where we're coming from, niyo ba? Sayang 'yung fiscal space pwede naming malagay sana sa ibang proyekto ang kayang ipatupad sa loob ng taon. Please, ma'am.
Sir, we recognize the intent of the bills for to have a a check and balance in the implementations of the national budget. On the non-release of some items, we maybe call the attention of the committee that there are special provisions and general provisions wherein there are some conditionalities that has to be submitted or complied with the departments of agency before the release could be made. So the DBM as part of its mandate has to have to ensure that such conditionalities are complied with before we release the budget. There's no intention not to release, but we have to make sure that it is fully utilized and being used as mandated.
Sangayin po ako dun ma'am, wala po akong pagtutold dun. Ang sinasabi ko po lamang, ang nagba-budget call on DBM, sinasubmit na iba't-ibang ahensya 'yung budget nila. I think your budget call for this year is on March 28 ang submission. Correct me if I'm wrong. So presumably, pinag-aralan ng DBM ay mula Marso hanggang Julio, by the time it submit po sa kongreso. Upang sa gayon, eh ministerial na lang 'yung compliance kumbaga. At hindi 'yung sitwasyon kung saan napakalaki ng savings na naiiwan o maiiwan kada taon na nagagamit sa ibang mga bagay-bagay na inihinina pag-usapan sa kongreso. But I also agree with you insofar as one half of what you said, ma'am, is concerned. And that's how I will dispose of these bills. It is the view of the Chair that it should properly belong in the annual General Appropriations Act, either in the special or general provisions, para yearly isama namin 'yung mga provision dun, kaugnay sa paggamit ng reserve, paggamit ng savings, pag-impose ng reserves kung meron man, at kung paano gagamitin 'yung mga savings na nage-generate in the course of the year. For purposes of our 2014 budget, we simply required notification requirements and notice requirements to COA, to DBM, and to Congress. But we plan, ma'am, for 2015 to consolidate and integrate some of the provisions of these bills in the proposed 2015 General Appropriations Act, where these provisions found in these bills properly belong. Kaya kahit di na ho kay mag-submit, ma'am, gagawin na lang namin sa gaa. And we can talk about it and discuss it there. Accordingly, the Secretariat is hereby directed to summarize and consolidate the aforementioned Senate bills so that we can take them up and consider them once we begin our hearings in the proposed budget for 20 fiscal year 2015. So ordered. Proceeding now to Senate Bill Number 626 and 627, filed by Senator Ricto. The first one entitled "An Act Instilling Fiscal Discipline in the Public Sector by Establishing Principles of Responsible Financial Management and Promoting Full Transparency and Accountability in Government Revenue Expenditure and Borrowing Programs." And number two, "An Act Setting a Ceiling in the Indebtedness of the Republic of the Philippines to Ensure Macroeconomic Stability and Sustainable Growth and for Other Purposes." Yusek Hill, sir?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning, sir.
We are happy to be invited here to comment on this fiscal responsibility bill.
I'm sure ayaw niyo rin to.
Not exactly. We agree with the general principles espoused by this bill. We think that instilling fiscal discipline in the public sector is the way to go, and we should abide by it. We only have some few questions on some of the provisions. For instance, on on the the withholding of era of all local governments. This might go against the Constitution. I don't know if that is the interpretation of some of the lawyers around. Second, the deficit-neutral measure. We think that it should also include identifying other sources of revenue instead of just cutting expenditure. On the repeal of the automatic guarantee provision of existing laws, we are in support of this, except that there might be some problems on some corporations, like the fiduciary on a few GOCCs like the SSGSIS, which do not borrow, but they yeah, they do not borrow, so there's no need to give them guarantee, but it's only their fiduciary guarantee. It's the obligation of the state to make sure that these institutions are viable. Also, there are comments on the debt cap. The rate is too ambitious, and I don't know if the Treasurer thinks that we still need a debt cap considering that we're already investment grade. We are not, we want to reduce the debt ratio, except that we don't want a specific date for it, which is 2016, as identified.
Tinayo milang huwag yun sa pagtatapos ng term ni Pangulo Aquino?
And actually, 40% is the average for us yun. And initially, we wanted also to do that, except that there's...
Where are we right now?
49.2%.
49.2?
Yes. And it's too tight, 40% by 2016. Baka 43 now, 43%.
By 2016?
Yes.
But it is a conscious effort to reduce it?
Yes, there is. There are efforts to reduce.
For the record, in 2010, what was it, where was it at, ma'am? 52.4?
Yes.
So 52.4 to 43.9 with about 3% per year, ang reduction niyo? Please, ma'am. The Treasurer is recognized.
Yeah, Chair, Mr. Chair. I think there's greater effort in the reduction of debt when we started also the liability management efforts of the government, starting in 2011 to 2013. As you may be aware, we've been buying some of our external debt, particularly those high coupon bonds that we had issued offshore. So that really made a drastic...
Because money is cheap now.
Yes, sir. And that was a drastic decline in the stock of our external debt. And the second, of course, measure is the reduction of our deficit. With the reduction in the deficit, that means we also are borrowing less than we have been borrowing in the earlier years. So that also contributed significantly in the reduction of the outstanding debt stock.
Ma'am, I think the objective of this bill is to institutionalize it because the basic fear is after the term of President Aquino, kung sino man 'yung magiging Pangulo, eh baka hindi 'yung ipagpatuloy to, magbago 'yung pulisiya. Sige, nandyan kayo, may direksyon ang Pangulo ngayon, pero baka magbago po 'yan at mag-iba bigla 'yung direksyon. Ang tanong ko po siguro, ang tanong ng Committee, dapat bang isabatas to? O dapat bang hayaan na lamang sa kamay ng sino mang Chief Executive? Ang pagdesisyon kaugnay ng bagay na ito? In other words, is it in the interest of a country in general, period, to reduce its debt? Or is it okay to have debts as long as you can do what you need to do, for as long as you can deliver basic services to your people?
Mr. Chair, we're always conscious naman of fiscal responsibility and our fiscal sustainability. But as we have seen also in the experience of the United States, there are some pitfalls in terms of putting that kind of thresholds in our borrowing capacity.
Because you need congressional approval to increase the cap.
Yes, sir. And of course, right now, malayo pa rin po ang requirements natin, particularly in our infrastructure spending. So by 2016, ang objective is to be able to have 5% of GDP sa infrastructure spending. But knowing that our revenues are not sufficient to cover all our expenditures, particularly for those productive uses, we still need to borrow. And at the same time, meron pa po tayong mga obligasyon that we also have to meet by that time. While it's true na mag-iiba po 'yung mga sa administration and the leadership, but we have already set the bar. Nakuha na po natin investment grade rating. And I'm sure the next administration would not want na mapabapu ang ating the way that a global economy or the global community would see the Philippines. So I think magpapatuloy po and as long as on the technical people naman po, nandyan po 'yung already shepherding this fiscal responsibility sa government. So I'm sure hindi naman ho ma masa-side way po 'yung objective natin na in terms of being fiscally prudent when it comes to borrowings.
Before I go to the GOCCs, can you help us come up with a bill outlining in broad strokes the policy agreement you have with us, Yusek Beltran? 'Yung in general, do I have fiscal responsibility without necessarily tying the hands of government and without necessarily impinging on the flexibility that government or any government should have insofar as borrowing and fiscal responsibility is concerned? It was correctly pointed out that the experience in the United States should give us a good lesson in politics, that if we require the participation of Congress, it might end up giving us more problems than solutions. In fact, when the Constitutional Commission debated on whether or not to correct the situation during Marcos's time, to require congressional approval before borrowings can be made, dahil nabuso daw ni dating Pangulong Marcos yun on, ang naging desisyon pa rin at pasan ang Constitutional Commission wag pa rin i-require. Ang pahintulot o permission ng kongreso, bago makahiram ang pamahalan, dahil baka daw kapusin sa sweldo ng sundalo o police, gulupa ang kalabasan ng tribulusyon, lalo na kung hindi kontrolado ng Pangulo, ang kongreso depende sa termino niya, sa loob ng kanyang termino. So can you help us out insofar as drafting, again, in broad strokes, so that we can come up with a bill that will hopefully institutionalize fiscal responsibility in government without necessarily restricting the flexibility that government should have under different circumstances depending on the world economy? Please, sir?
Yes, sure. We will help the Committee, Mr. Chairman.
Please, sir. Chairman Villanueva, sir, what are the current policies of the GCG with respect to GOCC borrowings? Meron po ba o bahala na si Batman?
Meron po, in the sense that in our performance agreement, we sit down with all of the remaining 121 operational GOCCs.
Remaining, meaning it's a countdown?
Opo.
Bawang babae numero?
We're hoping that by the end of this year, mga about 100 na lang ho natitira. So we've started with a figure of 158.
Before we leave that point, sir, when you wind down or liquidate, what do you usually do? Of particular concern for me, for example, is ZREC involved in the PDAF scam. If you wind it up, liquidate it, what will happen to the records of that GOCC?
The records are always safeguarded by a TW appointed and basically, the records will be kept with the supervising agency, in this case, by the department.
Of agriculture?
Yes.
So may iwan pa rin sa kanila?
Opo.
And they are mandated to keep it even if it is liquidated already?
Yes. In fact, they're supposed to absorb some of the operations of a GOCC that has been abolished that can be regularized into the national agency framework, Mr. Chairman.
And the records, they're mandated to keep it? That's only my concern. Please proceed, sir.
We will ensure that it is so done. We have now sat down pursuant to the mandate, we have now sat down, yes, last year, on each, with each of the boards, governing boards of the GOCCs that are operational, to agree on their performance agreement. It's a negotiation, they're the ones who set their targets, we just make sure that they, they're up to speed in it. And among the other things that they have to ensure as a major final output would be fiscal responsibility, including how they will handle some of the borrowings that they have, including how they would try to reduce their subsidies from the government in cases like INEA, including how they were supposed to meet a certain income target as a basis for what we call opening the gates to allow them to be able to consider granting performance-based bonuses to their officers and employees.
And if they violate this, what would happen?
The violation basically has twofold effects. They are now accountable to their officers and employees.
Chairman, I declare the presence of a quorum. Chair, I'd like to thank the presence of Senator Marcos.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Yes, and I will attend any wedding invitation that you send me.
Please proceed, Chairman Villanueva.
It's a serious proceeding, Mr. Chairman, because they, they know that they're accountable to setting targets that they must meet. Because if they don't meet the targets, then they have to face their people. Their people will not be entitled therefore to performance-based bonuses. Secondly, if they don't also meet the targets that are, they're also not entitled to their own performance-based incentive. And that also means that they are supposed to not be qualified for the appointment. So that's the carrot and stick that is now outlining the law, Mr. Chairman.
Nangyari na ho ba 'yan?
We went through the performance negotiation for the first time last year to set the targets for this year and next, for last year and this year.
So ngayon palang mangyayari po if ever?
Opo.
Ngayon palang mangyayari if ever na may matatanggal kun sakasakali at may hindi makakatanggap ng PBB?
Opo. They will have a small revolution in their hands the moment they don't qualify. That's why they take it very seriously, Mr. Chairman.
But insofar as it being a negotiation between the GOCC and you, so almost agreement lang yun between you and the GOCC? Kung ano 'yung... But what are your parameters? Kung ano 'yung tama, ano 'yung mali, ano 'yung prudent, ano 'yung responsible, and what's not?
We have, first of all, Mr. Chairman, it must be something that they proposed, based on their understanding and how to govern well their company. And also based on the fact that if they don't meet that, they have nobody to blame but themselves.
But how about you, sir? How do you say and what's your base in saying that? Okay to?
That's right.
Ito hindi to okay? Ito sobra, ito masyadong mawa ba?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. What we do, Mr. Chairman, is that they set their parameters, it's approved by the board before it's negotiated with us, and we and our technical people sit down and look at it. We look at the performance of a GOCC the past three years. We look at their plans what are ahead. We compare them with the national development projects, and then we synchronize it, Mr. President. And they're always set targets, they're quantifiable, they're measurable, wala hong ano ito. Hindi makakaroon ng bola-bolo, highfalutin that we cannot measure at the end of the day. And we have refused and set back performance targets that did not comply with that. So these are set on same OP framework to ensure that hindi ho ito, these are targets that are not measurable. They're always measurable, Mr. President.
To cite us an example, tapna at sarho natin NFA at saka Napokor. NFA? What's the agreement with NFA?
'Yung agreement, how? They're supposed to see how they can provide for their buffer. Secondly, they have, they committed a timetable for which when this is their, this is their primary mandate, that when there's an emergency, how long they have to meet a certain target, number of days, and how long they can ensure that they can provide for supply in order for the prices to stabilize in that area. And they're measured on that. And we will have third-party agencies that will measure if indeed they have been able to comply with their commitments, Mr. Chairman.
Example, sir. Several hearings were conducted by Senator Cynthia Villar on this matter insofar as what the NFA has been doing on the importation of rice. Paano pag bumirma ho sila sa papel, biglang tinamaan tayo ng bagyo? Wala namang binibigay na pondo talaga ang gobyerno sa NFA para bumili on emergency, in an emergency purchase ng bigas, biglang kailangan bumili. As what happened last year, we imported 500,000 metric tons to answer for the projected shortfall brought about by typhoon Yolanda that will wreak havoc on whatever agreements they entered into with you.
Ah, hindi ho, marunong silang, ano, mayroon silang buffer quota that takes into consideration that typhoons will come. So they make sure that they take that with us, and they have a certain buffer requirement that is time with harvesting, that is time with that is also time with the typhoon season. And they must live with the ratios that are provided therein. That's the best that they can do.
But sir, I'll give you another example, huh? The DA announced that we will be rice exporting and rice self-sufficient by the end of 2013. Apparently, we still imported 500,000 metric tons. So presumably, ang target na NFA was in line with the DA that by end of 2013, sufficient na tayo, hindi na tayo mag-iimport ng bigas for 2014, excluding the 500,000 that they imported. They did not foresee that. Unless dun sa pinasukan nilang agreement sa inyo, tinanggap na nilang hindi tayo rice self-sufficient by end of 2013, iba namang ang sinasabi nun, secretary nila, na rice self-sufficient tayo by 2013.
Ang target honilized based on buffer.
Go ahead. Please, Mr. Ignacio?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the 2013 performance target of NFA in fact included a certain amount of importation as approved by the NFA Council.
Shared by the DA's secretary?
Yes, you're right, Mr. Chairman.
No, yun nga 'yung pinong problema ko dun, na iba 'yung kinokomit sa GCG, umaami ng totoo, iba 'yung ina-announce na accomplishment. Kumbaga, from the start, when they entered into that agreement with you, they knew that we would not be self-sufficient, we would not be exporting. Well, we're exporting a small portion of our organic rice, but that does not count really. Can we have a copy of those agreements or targets that the GOCCs have entered with you?
We'll provide you a copy, Mr. Chairman. We've also posted it on our websites. All the performance agreements of the GOCCs with us are posted on our website.
Kindly provide us with a hard copy, nevertheless. So on debt cap, is there a need to legislate, sir? Or will these agreements suffice?
Problematic, Mr. Chairman, and we will be, we have submitted our comments this morning, but we will be supplementing it with the difficulty of providing for debt cap. It's a paper that our technical people have done and will supply that. It's very difficult to legislate a debt cap.
Actually, I agree with you, sir. But same as my request to the OF, can you help us out in crafting broad strokes? How fiscal responsibility can be institutionalized and not on a mere contractual agreement between the GCG and the GOCCs? And the same is true with the government agencies. Para naman ho, may produktong lumabas dito at may laban tayo na ma-institutionalize it beyond the term of President Aquino.
We'll do that, Mr. Chairman.
Help us out, sir. Secretariat is directed to refer Senate Bill Number 626 and 627 to a technical working group and invite the technical people of the agencies concerned to help us craft, as directed by the Chair, broad strokes on fiscal responsibility with a view to institutionalizing the same. Now, Senate Bill Number 844 and 1070, filed by Senators Ejercito and Estrada, creating a People's Fund. Director Navarro, ma'am? Does the DBM have a comment for this already? Not yet?
What we can say now is we recognize the importance of health and education in the budget because for the last five years, we have increasing the budget for education and health. In fact, for the average share of the social services is at least 31% of the total national budget.
In fact, the proposal nila, mas malaki, mas malaki ba 'yung binibigay natin sa budget kesa 'yung proposal nila sa People's Fund, di po ba?
Yes, sir, kasi it's just coming from VAT.
It's just coming from VAT?
Yes.
That would amount approximately, tama ho ba 'yung computation namin, approximately 130 billion? Magkano ba total VAT collections niyo? Yusek? You have an idea?
Our computation is 30% would be approximately 130 billion. But total health and education allocations for 2014 is over 380 billion.
31%.
Actually, more than 1%, ma'am.
2013.
Mr. Chairman, the total VAT collections for 2013 is 362 billion, and 30% of this is 109 billion.
109 billion?
Yes.
Kasama na dyan 'yung VAT na kinokolekta ng Bureau of Customs, sa hindi pa po?
Yes, we added both, the BOs and BIs.
Pero hindi pa rin kasama sa computation ng era?
Ah, hindi pa rin ho.
Ma'am, as a policy, is the DBM in accord with earmarks?
Actually, on the earmarking, there is that lacking provision on the sunset clause. Even in the previous bills that there are earmarking, so the DBM is not amenable for the earmarking because at the end of the day, when all these these expenditures had been satisfied with, DBM is placed on a dilemma of...
Whether or not to continue?
Whether to continue or not because it's provided in the law and yet, all the conditionalities have been confirmed.
But ma'am, even if it is earmarked, if Congress allocates a lesser amount in the annual General Appropriations Act that is deemed an amendment of the previous law passed, would that not be correct? Even if it is earmarked pursuant to a law passed by Congress and then in dagaa, we disagree with it for that particular year? We can always do that?
It's a duty within the power of Congress.
Yusek, earmarking, what's the view of the OF?
For us, it complicates the process of budgeting. But it's up for Congress to do it if they want to.
Actually, my problem is I agree with you. Earmarking this time restricts the hand of Congress come the budget season. We're into it, and in fact, we can appropriate funds and allocate funds accordingly on a per-year basis through the General Appropriations Act. And as the Chair stated earlier for the record, we are in fact appropriating more on for education and health, more than 30% being proposed of VAT collection. So though they proposed that this be on top of what we are allocating, but I believe we have been funding education, health enough, both from the syntaxes and also insofar as catching up with our classroom backlog and teacher-to-student ratio is concerned, not only in this budget for 2014, but in the previous budget as well.
not only in this budget for 2014, but in the previous budget as well. Chair hereby orders that Senate Bill Number 844 and 1070 be consolidated and summarized and to be taken up during the budget deliberations for the proposed budget of 2015 on the General Appropriations Act for 2015. So ordered. Senate Bill Number 784 and 1864, 1511 and 1539. Providing for amendments to the Administrative Code, the Budget Process, Line Item Budgeting, and Transparency in Expropriation Proceedings. I'd like to thank the D P W H for attending. Actually, all of these are being done right now. Correct me if I'm wrong, ma'am? Diba? Lahat nung nasa proposed bill, ginagawa na po naman ngayon, hindi po ba?
Yes, sir. On the section 17 wherein a common setup account is required, we have a harmonized account code system which was crafted together with the Commission on Audit.
But this is done via executive fiat?
We have a joint resolutions with the Commission on Audit and the Department of Finance.
It's a resolution? Director Minus, ma'am, it's a resolution or a circular?
A circular, sir.
It's a joint circular?
Yes.
And how long has this circular been in existence?
2013, sir.
Ah, bago lang?
Yes, sir. We call that the Unified Account Code.
How long have you been with the D B M, ma'am? Without revealing your age, ma'am?
Since 1980, sir.
No, I ask that because in practice, itong mga joint resolution, joint memorandum ninyo, does it survive the lifetime of the existing administration?
Yes, sir. Unless amended by
Another circular or memorandum?
Yes.
So itong ginawa niyong to will still be applicable beyond the term of President Aquino?
Yes.
Kung lahat namang pala na nasa proposed bills, the first two bills at least, Senate Bill Number 784 and 1864, are found in that memorandum circular, so can we not legislate it? Nevertheless, no harm, no foul namang na pala siya eh? At least to make it permanent?
Yes, sir.
Natuloy na common coding system, kahit 'yung mga reportorial requirements, kung ano ang kasama sa budget na binibigay, you submit it to us anyway.
Each form of the general provisions and special provisions of the Annual General Appropriations Act, except for some sections that only impoundment on the reserve.
No, impoundment nga, ma'am. Sagaan na lang 'yan. Year-to-year na lang namin gagawin 'yan. Can you submit to us a copy of the joint memorandum or joint circular between D B M and COA on the matter? Online item that has been a policy of the committee, and anyway, Congress can change its mind on a year-to-year basis whether or not to provide lump sums. One more question, ma'am. Just for the record, I know the answer to the question really, but just for the record, posible ba talaga ang budget na walang lump sum o hindi?
Sir, hindi po. Kasi there are contingencies. Kasi the way we prefer our budget
Well, Calamity Fund is definitely a lump sum.
Yes.
Clearly.
Yes. And even the miscellaneous personal benefits fund, because there are some that has not been, especially for those feeling of oppositions and for the retirement, that is the big chunk of the lump sums.
Lump sum din 'yan. But in each agency, would you agree with me that each agency should have a lump sum if wanted to provide the needed flexibility that the agency might need outside of their Q R F, huh? Para may magawa silang mga proyekto pa in the course of the year that they might want to do?
Actually, with the new mechanism on the release of funds, the G A A has released documents, we're trying to
Disaggregate and unbundle?
Yeah. It's good for us to have that disaggregated early. It also means to ensure that the agency's plan ahead.
Plan ahead of time?
Yes.
So can you help us out, ma'am? Can you sit down with our technical working group in order to thresh out the provisions that can be adopted as contained in your joint memorandum circular together with COA so that we can legislate the common provisions of your joint memorandum circular as well as what's found in these proposed bills para mas longstanding and more permanent and hindi by mere executive fiat po lamang or agreement with COA? Yung bagay n'yan?
Yes, sir.
May inquire from the D P W H, on expropriation proceedings, are you not doing this already too, sir? Attorney Veranda or Director Gatan?
We are not yet doing this, Mr. Chair.
How come?
What we're doing is if the possession fails with the landowner, we file the expropriation complaint. But we do not publish it in the newspaper.
But isn't it required to be published when you file a petition for expropriation?
No, 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 Mr. Chair. It's not yet required.
It's not?
No, not required, Mr. Chair.
What will be the effect of doing it or not doing it?
Well
What's the advantage, if any?
The advantage, Mr. Chair, is with regards to the safety and security of the landowner affected. If the public knows the amount to be received by the landowner, then
Baka makidnap pa siya?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Can we instead require posting on your website?
We can do it, Mr. Chair.
At least the lands to be expropriated, kahit wag na 'yung mayari, identifying the lots or lands to be expropriated and the amounts allocated for each. So let's say, may tatamaan kayong sampung parsela ng lupa in a particular area dahil may kaliwang gagawin, wide din 'yung kung ano man, o bagong kalye, to identify the lots that will be hit and the amount, 15% po ano? 15% to take over the property? Kasi 'yung right of heir, hindi niyo namang binabayaran up to date 'yan, diba? And usually, the amount is yet to be determined?
For expropriation, Mr. Chair, we deposit the
The mic, sir.
We deposit 100% of the sonal valuation of the property.
15?
100%.
100% na?
Yes.
Bakit? Hindi ba 'yung batas niya require 15%? You can take over already?
100% na, Mr. Chair, RA 8924.
Anamindahan ba 'yun?
Yes.
100% na po 'yun?
Yes, in accordance with pursuant to RA 8924.
So delayed lang ang bayad pag walang expropriation proceedings? Tama po ba 'yun?
Meron nung kuwan, before we expropriate, we should deposit 100% B I R sonal. Ang nagiging problema, pag nasa korte, 'yung just compensation. Kasi ang nasa budget lang natin, it's only about 'yung B I R sonal lang o 'yung naisasama namin sa budget. But 'yung just compensation is not included with the budget.
Ah, equivalent lang? Website? Okay na? Ang problema kasi, additional expense pa pag ipapublish niyo eh.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair.
Website would be enough? Will just include it in the special provisions in your budget for next year, which hopefully will be found therein henceforth? Imbis na magpasapaho kami ng hiwalay na bill, pwede namang namin isama na to si General.
Mr. Chair, for your information, there is a proposed House Bill, 2994, amending RA 8924. Yes, there is a proposed House Bill.
Wala, sir.
Ikun na lang natin.
What about, sir?
We recommend that this be incorporated in the proposed House Bill, 2994.
Ano po sinasabi sa bill natin?
This is an act amending certain provisions of RA 9184.
Among others?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Among others, ano 'yung naamindahan niya?
The House Bill did not include these proposed amendments, Mr. Chair.
Ah, ito po hindi sinama?
Yes.
Pero hindi ko na ako balakipas ito eh. Balak ko na lang ilagay sa budget ito eh. Ano po ba amendments na House Bill na pinapanukala dun?
Regarding the issuance of, the early issuance of the writ of possession because we are being beset by the delay in the issuance of the writ of possession, but not in all cases, but in some cases, the writ of possession is not being issued.
Ida refer ko na lang po ito sa budget deliberations. Insofar as Senate Bill Number 784, 1864 is concerned, the same is referred to a technical working group so that recommendations can be made on the appropriate committee report in Senate Bill. Insofar as Senate Bill Number 1511 and 1539 is concerned, the same is referred for the consideration of the committee during the budget deliberations for the proposed budget of the succeeding year, particularly fiscal year 2015. So ordered. Sisingit ko lang 'yung isang bill, the bill insofar as Deputy Governor is concerned. Sir, Senate Bill Number 628 requiring the appearance of the Secretary of Finance and the Governor of the Central Bank. Actually, sir, ang balak ko rito, I had discussions ahead with Deputy Governor Aquino. Ida refer na lang po namin ito sa Joint Oversight Committee on public expenditure created by the Dagaah for 2014. Total namang magre-report din po kayo dun. Will pass it as a resolution dun sa Dagaah. I understand there are concerns with respect to the foreign currency operations of the Banco Central insofar as confidentiality requirements are needed. Can you elucidate on that, sir, for the record?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We support the proposal of the Chairman to revert this to the joint committees. Yes, because of certain issues which may come up during the deliberation. There are certain market-sensitive issues which may be taken up during the deliberation, Mr. Chairman. And as they are market-sensitive, they can move the markets. I'm referring particularly, Mr. Chairman, to foreign exchange operations of the Banco Central. And this could have important repercussions on the market. So we support the idea of the
Thank you, sir. We will do that. So Senate Bill Number 628 is hereby referred to the Joint Congressional Oversight Committee on Public Expenditure. We will be conducting our first, our second hearing actually, on the second week of March. So ordered. Senate Bill Number 876, restoring the power of Congress to appropriate payments on that service as discussed. But Yusek Beltran, can you give me a position paper on this so that I can furnish it to the author? Para mapaliwanag po namin kung bakit hindi dapat Kongreso. Isama niyo na po kung pwede 'yung historical basis na kahit nga 'yung constitutional commissioners ay hindi 'yun pinagpasahan at ginawa.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
But offhand, what effect will it have on the integrity and efficacy of debt papers or instruments issued by the government kung 'yung payment idadaan sa Kongreso? Ma'am?
Mr. Chair
These are sovereign guarantees.
Pag NGP po, talagang national government na po 'yung nagbabayad nun, so
But once we say that Congress will appropriate on a yearly basis?
Ano po, may kakalan po ng nervousness in the market kasi po, sasabihin ng, kasi right now, with the automatic appropriations, they know na babayaran ho on time 'yung ating obligations.
So 'yung pagiging sovereign ang guarantee, sovereign talaga siya, guarantee talaga siya?
Yes, sir. And at the same time, they know na regardless ho sa budget, kung kulang o hindi, like for example, nagkaroon po ng exchange rate fluctuations, hindi ho nagka siya 'yung nasa budget, then automatic po, mata-top up 'yung whatever's in the budget to be able to cover the payment. So, ano po 'yun, credit positive for us. But once na nagkaroon na po ng talagang, it has to go to Congress, then magkakalan po ng concerns ang market regarding kung will be able to pay on time at kung enough resources would be made available for the timely payment.
Actually, ma'am, I completely agree with you. Just help us insofar as providing us with data to support this assertion. Halimbawa po, may bansa na ba sa mundo na gumawa nito? Tayo lang ba ang gagawa nito akong sakasakali? Kung may bansa man sa mundo na gumawa po niyan, ano pong nangyari? At kung may mga pag-aaral, kaugnay ng epekto sa merkado, kapagka ginawa ito, pag-usapan ito, ipasado ng Kongreso? Para po mabigay namin dun sa may akda. Para may paliwanag din po sa kanya kung bakit, baga man maganda ang layunin, eh, mas malaking negatibo epekto ang maaring maidurad po nito. Sir? Deputy Governor Gigno?
Come, Mr. Chairman. We will also provide data to the committee, Mr. Chairman. At the same time, we would like to just emphasize that among our peers in terms of investment grade, we still are enjoying lower spreads on our debt as a sovereign. Two reasons are given by the market, Mr. Chairman. One is the automatic appropriation in the budget, and secondly, the existence of our bond sinking fund. These two features in our debt management strategy actually provide greater comfort to the markets.
Is that unique to us, sir?
I don't, I think this is unique to us. In other countries, they don't have
The bond, the sinking fund?
The bond sinking fund or the
Even the automatic appropriations? That's unique to us?
Yes.
Really? Kindly submit that to us, sir.
We will do that, Mr. Chairman.
So in other countries, it has to be appropriated on a yearly basis?
I think that is the case for many countries, Mr. Chairman. And in other countries, there is in fact a debt cap. So in case there is some procedural deadlock
Like what happened to the US?
And executive, there could be some delay in the payment of debt.
Precisely, like what happened to the US?
That's right, Mr. Chairman.
But in the case of a debt cap, if you borrow to take out a previously existing debt, will that be counted insofar as computing the cap?
Yeah, I think refinancing will be an additional amount.
Even if it's used to pay, yeah?
Yeah.
Assuming you can borrow money at a lower rate today and you want to take out an instrument at a higher rate of interest contracted in the previous year, would that be computed as part of the debt cap? Yes? So kahit gawin mo 'yun, mag-eexceed ka pa rin sa debt cap?
Sir, remember also, in our case, right now, in particular, our R O P bonds, they're already premium. So kahit na bumaro ho tayo at par, premium ho 'yung price nung R O Ps nung bonds. So, in addition to the nominal, the face amount, you have to buy, to borrow at a premium to be able to take it out.
To be able to take it out?
Ba-baro kayo at 100, pero 'yung presyo, 103. So, mas malaki po 'yung ibabaro niyo to be able to
Ang sumatay talan, ganun pa rin. Point well taken. Kahit lisamida tas, so you can furnish the author. Senate Bill Number 1653 on the Swiss Challenge. May ask the D B M, are you familiar with this proposed measure? May inquire the agencies here present, D O T C, D B M, D O F. Under ba sa inyo P P P? Hindi? Neda, ma'am? Swiss Challenge. I read the bill. I have problems understanding the bill because the cases cited in the bill is quite different from, I think, the intention of the bill, really. Tanong, saan ba nakalagay ang Swiss Challenge sa batas natin? Ma'am? Director Oliva?
I apologize, sir, but the issues for the P P P Center and it's not under our, under national policy and planning stuff, perhaps?
D B M, Director Navarro, ma'am, if it's under the B O T law, I know it's under the B O T law, but essentially, ang gusto niya, hindi lang sa B O T, sa procurement, i-institutionalize ang Swiss Challenge. But this is my problem with that, ma'am. Ang procurement are the common things, usual things in the regular course of business, so to speak, that government acquires on a yearly basis. Ang B O T is something outside the radar screen of government. In fact, the government did not think about it, does not want to spend for it, does not want to study it. But someone with a brilliant idea came up with it together with the finance and proposed it to government. And that's what gives him the right to a Swiss Challenge. Diba? Swiss Challenge sa meaning, gumastos ako, nag-aral ako dito, naghayar ako na experto, nag-proposo ako ng project sa gobyerno. gumastos ako, nag-aral ako dito, nag-hire ako na experto, nag-propose ako ng project sa gobyerno. Um, under, um, the BOT law, um, pag may mag-propose na mas mura, ginamit 'yung, binisilamit ko 'yung plano sa gobyerno, may right ako to match it, akin pa rin 'yun. That's my understanding of a Swiss Challenge. Um, but how do you use that in procurement? Wala namang proponent eh. Attorney Kintos, even in the DOTC, diba, may mga, may mga, karamihan, BOTK, diba?
Yes, sir.
Um, how do you institutionalize it in procurement?
Actually, the departments already submitted comment on the bill, on the proposed bill, and I think it was, uh, passed to your office yesterday.
I haven't seen it, at least.
And the, 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 the department is willing to furnish you a copy of...
But just that question, sir, paano gagawin 'yun sa procurement?
Hirap nga, sir. Kasi, the Swiss Challenge are applicable to unsolicited proposals.
Precisely.
And then it also applies to projects that are not considered priority projects of the government.
And the reason why he is being given the right to a Swiss Challenge is gumastos na siya. Diba, nag-study siya, may gastas na siya eh. Kung siya unang nakaisip, eh, the, may ganun siyang karapatan. Diba, write to match lang if there is a better offer. Hindi po ba? Pero paano sa procurement? I cannot see to eh, unless you can help me out. No answer, ma'am? Ako rin, no answer eh. Now, the case cited in the bill and the explanatory note states, for example, may lupa na foreign, may lupa daw na foreign, 'yung pamahalaan, I think this is one of the GOCs, may lupang foreign, um, sinablis ngayon na nagre-renta, ngayon, nung gusto na mag-renew, after twenty-five years na nagsasablis, and this is one of the GOCs, i-benta na 'yung lupa. So gumawa ng offer, 'yung nagsasablis. Ang unang tanong sa DOJ, sa opinion ng DOJ, na naging kaso sa Cortez Suprema was, um, does it step into the shoes of the lesi, of the original lesor, lesi rather? The answer is yes, kasi wala namang prohibition against ablis. The next question was, nag-offer siya ng presyo to buy the land, 'yung sublessina. Ang sabi ng agency, ano gagawin namin dito? Pwede bang mag-Swiss Challenge dito? Pero ang definisyon niya ng Swiss Challenge, baliktad. May magmamatch. So 'yung sublessi, nag-offer to buy the land, and now they want to put up a notice asking any other person who might want to give a better offer, tapos pwedeng i-match nung nag-propose na sublessi. In that situation. So kailangan pa ng desisyon ng DOJ para dun, at pinayagan ng DOJ at that time. Ang problema ko dun, if it's a project that the reg, the government regularly does, unahan ngayon 'yan, mag-file ng proposal, and that will immediately give me the right to match, asa na 'yung bidding natin. Wala ng public bidding 'yan. So alam kong bibili ng tangke 'yung gobyerno, magpo-propose na ako ng tangke, na may kasamang trap. Diba, tas pagbid ng gobyerno, sabihin ko, may right to match ako, eh, diba wala ng sealed bid 'yan? Wala, wala na akong sagot eh. In this case, the sublessi occupying the property, may right of first refusal siya dapat, pero duda sila sa provision na 'yun. So ang naging lusot, Swiss Challenge siya. Ma'am, as a GPPB head, can you submit to us possible permutations on how the Swiss Challenge rule can be applied? Um, on a limited scope, perhaps, insofar as government procurement is concerned? Kung may permutation or formula po, pwede ma-apply 'yun?
We will do that, but, uh, uh, we are not, we will, we are not furnished with a copy of the bill.
Will furnish you with a copy of the bill, ma'am?
Yeah.
Hanapan natin, maganda naman 'yung concept na Swiss Challenge, ayoko lang na magamit 'yun to circumvent public bidding and sealed bids. Senate Bill Number 1653 is hereby referred to Technical Working Group, so the same can be refined and, um, its applicability defined within our system, within the provisions of the government procurement law. Senate Bill Number 1987 authored by Senator Poe, seeking to establish a Backwood Central Visayas Commission. Um, Chair would like to refer this to the reorg, government reorganization. Same is hereby referred to the Government Reorganization Committee insofar as the creation of the Backwood Central Visayas Commission is concerned. Insofar as the appropriation is concerned, the same is hereby already covered by the General Appropriations, um, Act for 2014, which essentially provided, in fact, more funds, a total of a hundred billion, both under the program and unprogrammed funds, for the reconstruction, rehabilitation, not only of, um, central visayas affected by the earthquake, but also by, um, insofar as the areas affected by Typhoon Yolanda and other typhoons is concerned. So ordered. Senate Bill Number 941 on the 6,000 increase in minimum pay. Ma'am, Director Navarro, what study are you conducting? Ang puro kayo 'to, pinansakoy.
We have, uh, submitted our official comments on this bill, and...
I read it, ma'am, for the record, what, what is the study you're conducting?
We have a national, we are conducting a national survey on salaries, uh, to benchmark the salaries of government employees to the be, to the private sectors.
Mas mataas pa nga ngayon, diba? Minimum wage, minimum wage wise?
Yes, and even in the rank and file, the only, the findings before in the last survey is that we, in terms of the middle, the middle management and top management, that's, that is what we are, had to be address.
I presume you will ask also the comment of the DOF, may we ask it directly of Yusek Beltran? Again, just for our record and for the information of the author, what would be the budget impact of this? Magkaano po ba ang kailangan kung iingresan natin ang anim na libo, sino ba naman ang may ayon 'yan? Lahat wa nandito siguro, gusto 'yan. Pero mas mahirap paasahin 'yung tao, kesa sasabihin na natin ang prangkat diretsa kung kaya natin o hindi. I think we will be committing a graver crime on offense if we raise false hopes, rather than simply being frank about it and admit whether or not we can do it and how much we can afford, should we be doing it? Please, sir? So kung iingresan natin, magkaano ba talaga? Finally, Senate Bill Number 963 filed by Senator, um, Estrada, Internal Auditing Act amendments. Um, I went through the provisions of the bill. This is already covered as per the comment of DBM in the national, commented by the Kowa, National Government in, internal audit system. Ma'am, my question is, it applies to the executive branch clearly, to GOCs. Does it apply to Congress?
Yes, I think, it's all, uh, uh, in the end check, the...
Ma'am, walang kapangyarihan ang DBM sa amin, huh? I mean, I don't think their circulars apply to us insofar as what we want to do is concerned.
Mr. Chair, you are considered a national government agency.
Kasama kami sa kanila?
Eh, I, I, I presume so, I guess so.
Even Constitutional Commissions?
Yes, we are covered by this.
The Supreme Court?
I, I, yes, we are.
So the DBM circular applies to them insofar as internal audit systems are concerned?
Yes, sir, because the addressi, if I may read, are the following. Uh, heads of department, bureaus, office, and agencies of the national government, including state universities, colleges, government-owned and controlled corporation, local government units, and all...
Oh, ma'am, walang sinabing Congress and Constitutional Commission.
And all other concern.
Ma'am, hindi, ah, ano, sa all others na lang kami?
Sir. But you can, you can ask the DBM also, you can ask the DBM.
Morning, sir.
Director Aruta, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Ma'am, diba, if you have a list, it usually would specify the Supreme Court, Congress, and Constitutional Commissions and Offices, enjoying fiscal autonomy.
Sir, if I may, the national, uh, uh, guidelines on internal control systems, no? It applies to the judicial branch, legislative branch, as, uh, branch, as well as the constitutional offices.
And the basis would be?
Uh, sir, the, the guidelines that has been issued by DBM and OP.
Ma'am naman, kayo lang ang gumawa niyan eh.
Sir, it's in the applicability clause or section...
Isn't being followed?
Uh, the H O R is the only one which, uh, so far on the legislative branch...
Ang hindi sumunod?
Ang meron, meron pa lang ho.
Ah, kami lang ang hindi sumunod? Tapos, sabi ko na sa'yo, ma'am.
Sir, uh, you are only encouraged pala.
So it is mandatory insofar as the executive branch is concerned, including GOCs and SOCs?
Uh, for the legislative, you are...
I presume, I'm even the Supreme Court. I presume even the Constitutional Commission?
The judiciary and the, uh, okay, sir, naka, uh, encouraged din ang judiciary.
Now, if we legislate this, it will apply to all?
Yes, sir.
Correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes, sir.
So may utility ang pag-legislate po nito?
Yes, sir.
So let's do it, para ma-require. So kami lang ang hindi nag-comply, ma'am?
Sa H O R meron na ano?
H O R meron, ma'am?
Uh, set...
Director Jimenez, ma'am, meron? We don't. In the Senate, we don't?
Senate wala pa, sir. If I may...
Please, ma'am.
Uh...
The comment of Kowa was, this is included already in the NGIAS.
Yeah, but, uh, the proposed bill, uh, you have mentioned, uh, about the number of the bill being amended, uh, that, uh, it is, it was stated that you are amending 1177, but the Republic Act should be the 4177, it's not 1177.
Forty-one seventy-seven?
Forty-one seventy-seven, an act to amend section two, three, and four of Republic Act, uh, 3,456, known as Internal Auditing Act of 1962.
It should be what?
Uh, forty-one seventy-seven. Uh, but, Your Honor, uh, I think, uh, in the, in the, aside from the end check that we are referring to, uh, the DM, the DBM has already, uh, published the Philippine Government Internal Audit Manual. This is a product of, uh, of the DBM in conjunction with our office. And, uh, we have stated here all the, um, all the, um, series of, um, of amendments to the Internal Auditing Act of 1962, where they stated that, um, that these acts were already amended by Presidential Decree Number One. We have, in this manual, there are legal bases for internal audit and there are chronology of issuances in the creation of the internal audit system. This might be of help to the committee, because in here, uh, there is also, uh, DOJ opinion stating that, uh, these, um, Republic Act are no longer basis for the creation of the EAS because of the series of, uh, executive order issued, uh, for the creation of the internal audit.
But my problem with EOs, ma'am, unless it was done under and by virtue of the lawmaking powers of the president, PD in the case of Marcos, EOs in the case of, uh, Cory, um, it's applicable only to the executive branch.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so, um, kindly be patient and work with our Technical Working Group in crafting and legislating this so that it will be clearly be made applicable and not simply encouraged on the part of Congress, the judiciary, um, as well as the Constitutional, um, Commissions and our Constitutional Bodies. Para sumunod po sila. And I'm sure you cannot provide for penal clauses in, uh, the memorandum, at least by legislation, we can provide for penal clauses in cases of non-compliance. So it's a matter of codifying, consolidating the provisions of the bill, of the memorandum into a bill, and providing penal clauses. And updating it at the same time, ma'am. So Senate Bill Number 963 is hereby referred to Technical Working Group for the crafting and appropriate recommendation and drafting of a committee report insofar as, um, the subject matter covered by NGIAS is concerned, and for the same to be legislated and to provide legislative cover requiring and mandating it on the part of all agencies of the national government, including Congress, the judiciary, um, as well as the Constitutional Commissions and our Constitutional Bodies created by the Constitution. So ordered. Hearing is suspended, and thank you for attending this morning's hearing. Maganda magapo sa inyo, ma'am.